Okay, everyone, we're gonna begin our regular school board meeting. It's Tuesday, May 17th, 2010. And Member Grover, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Member Cameron.
Here.
Member Glass.
Present.
I am here. Member Johnston.
Here.
Member Casper.
Here.
Chair Sliga-Ponco.
Here.
Member Lawson.
Here.
Superintendent Dixon.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Hanson.
Secretary Thibault.
Student Rep. Lindsay Redenbaugh.
Here.
And Student Rep. Marcus John.
Here.
I'm Chair.
Thank you, Member Grover. And will everyone stand up and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is the approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Member Cameron. So it's been moved by Member Cameron. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Grover. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the agenda approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it carries unanimously. And the next item is the reading and approval of the minutes. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting of Tuesday, April 26th, please?
So moved.
Moved by Member Grover. Have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Member Cameron. Thank you. Is there any additions or corrections, Member Johnston?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do have a couple corrections or clarifications. On page five, first item, which is HR 4-112875, this was about the executive employees contract and the minutes state, Member Glass asked who negotiated the contract and asked questions about the insurance benefits. Since this was in the minutes, it seems like it should have been answered as well in the minutes for the record. And I would suggest here that the answer should have been given, which was Grunz, Henson, and Dixon. I have also page seven, item 6.1, which was an item that Member Glass withheld and doesn't state in the minutes, but when I listened to the DVD, Member Glass introduced a motion. That is not in the minutes. And I couldn't tell, but there was somebody, wasn't discernible on the DVD, that indicated that he could not introduce a motion. Since he did introduce a motion, that has to be at least in there that he introduced it and the reason why that wasn't accepted also has to be in the minutes.
You have more?
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to approve the minutes of April 26th. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, and motion carries unanimously. And then the next one is, oh, I'm sorry, I missed the special school board meeting of April 26th. I'm sorry. You know what? How I did that because it's not, we voted on the regular one because that's the first page here. How did I miss the special school board meeting?
Excuse me, can I ask you one thing?
Go ahead.
Linda, could you tell me who seconded that motion on the minutes we just approved?
Member Cameron.
Cameron? Okay, yeah, thank you. I'm Chair.
You know what? I don't have.
The page before.
It's, okay, that's why I missed it. I see that.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special school board meeting for April 26th, please?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, moved by Member Grover, seconded by Member Casper. Are there any changes? Okay, let's vote on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously also. So that was the special school board meeting. Next is the special school board meeting of April 27th. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, been moved by Member Grover, seconded by Member Casper. Any additions or corrections? Okay, seeing none?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Okay. Member Glass.
I have a question.
Yes.
We recorded this meeting. See, that's a question. Was this special meeting recorded? There are tapes available. Somebody wanted to listen to what was said, they're available. So is there somewhere we can indicate out here that that in fact happened? Because if I just read this, I don't get any idea that there's an additional record. So I would ask that we simply indicate that this is a special meeting and special meetings are audio recorded. And I'll make the same request for all of the ones that are.
Usually special school board meetings are recorded, aren't they? Yeah. So, I mean, I don't know if we need, since they are.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the special school board meeting, April 27th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. And the next one is the special school board meeting for April 28th, and that is the back page of that. Just board members saying no. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's move by Member Grover, seconded by Member Casper. Are there any additions or corrections? Okay, let's vote on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. And then we have the minutes of the special school board meeting of April 29th. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Member Johnston?
Second.
Okay, Member Casper. Okay, any additions or corrections? Okay, let's vote on that. All those in favor of the minutes of the special school board meeting of April 29th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. And the last one, the minutes of the special school board meeting for April 30th, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, Member Casper, seconded by Member Johnston. Is there any discussion, any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously also. Okay, we are ready to move into audience. And so, Member Casper, could you get the sheet? Thank you. We're going to call each person up one at a time. And Member Grover will tell you, everyone has three minutes. And please remember our civility code. I don't know where they went. I think when it got painted, they are laying over there. But, so, anyway, Member Grover will let you know when you have 30 seconds left. So our first speaker is Mike Sundine, and then our second speaker is Lisa Dudley.
Thank you, Chair Ponco, Superintendent Dixon, respected members of the school board. I come with a message from Craig Olson, head of the Building Trades. The message is, thank you. Thank you for taking the courage it takes to move forward with some of these large projects that's truly gonna be a lasting investment in our community. There are thousands of families that have been impacted in such a positive way throughout this region, and the legacy will continue for decades to come with our children. So thank you very much from the thousands of families. And it's a personal thank you from me. I see a lot of my brothers and sisters in the skilled trades working every day, and it's absolutely terrific. But I'm not gonna let you off the hook that easy. Personal, a couple of personal stories. My one son was a school employee, school district employee, and he was one of the very few that was terminated because of this move. And he has absolutely no regrets. He has a son as well that's gonna enjoy the fruits of what we're doing today, and he'll be educated in some fine facilities here in this city. So thank you from him as well. He was forced to go back to school. He just got his first semester grades. He's carrying a 4-0. So you don't get off the hook that easy either. I did time on a school board over at Spokane, and I sat on a facilities committee, just as some of you did. And I sat next to an art teacher, and this guy doodled the whole time like an art teacher would, I guess. And he had pictures of him and I, because we had some big plans. And he had pictures of the rest of the school board that had smaller plans, and they had little tiny looking glasses, and we had great big ones. So we were looking further into the future, just as you did. So thank you very much from all the students, all the construction families, and keep up the good work. I hope you have the courage to endure some of the tough decisions that you have in front of you, closing other schools, but we all appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next is Lisa Dudley, and after her is Jeff DeBol.
Good evening. I'm here as a parent of two children in ISD 709. I want to express to you the deep concern I have not only for my children, but for all children in our district because of the loss we'll be facing with the absence of our assistant principals in all of our schools. I'm astonished how we could think that there is not a need for funding. Schools in other districts alike seem to know there's a need and funding. White Bear Lake, North High, 1,285 students, one principal and two assistants. White Bear Lake South High, 1,208 students, one principal, two assistants. Saint Cloud Tech High School, 1,400, one principal, two assistants, and the list goes on. The function of these positions is great. Federal law states that an administrator be present at all IEP special education meetings. Central Denfeld, roughly 1,300 students, 20% are special education. As a parent, I want to make sure that teachers are trained and evaluated, and only an administrator can do that. As a parent, I want to know that my children will be safe, a vital role as an administrator, and the list goes on. Next year, Nettleton, for the first time, will have self-contained EBD and DCD classrooms. Out of 450 students, 18% will require special education. 80 students this year have been referred for planned intervention for next year. The goal is to keep them out of special education. All of which, an administrator will be needed to attend these meetings by federal law. I would like to know how many school board members have actually visited Nettleton this year? I am there daily. I see the administrators greeting each child, the supervision of the building to include the lunchroom, the buses, supervision and homework duty that administrators are doing. But especially a unique school like Nettleton can function, cannot function with one administrator. Please consider this. Please consider the students and the families. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next is Jeff DeBol, and after him will be Linda Ross Selner.
Hello, Chair Ponco, Superintendent Dixon, and the rest of the school board members. I'm here on behalf of the Plumbers and Steamfitters Local 11. I handed a letter to the school board, and I'd like to read that letter. Dear school board members, I'd like to thank you for your decision to use PLA's on the Duluth Long Range Facility Plan. It helped put 50 of local 11 Plumbers and Steamfitter members to work in their hometown. That's about 15% of our local. If the PLA was not used, I can tell you that from past practice, the projects throughout the state, we would have been lucky to get half of that number to work. I know that the workmanship of our members is of very high quality, and this is due to the continuing education of apprenticeship standards that we require ourselves. Again, from all the members of local 11 Plumbers and Steamfitters, I thank you and agree with your decisions, with your hard decisions that you had to make to make this project happen. I hope that you will continue this direction that you have taken. I believe that the high quality of the school system will draw high-quality professionals with their families to Duluth with the promise of making a good living here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Next is Linda Ross Selner, and after her is Sam Searing.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for your service. Some of you heard my ramblings and comments at the public hearing to close Central High School. That's what I wish to speak to tonight. I'm familiar with public speaking and unable to see the time limit cards because they were behind me. I was cut off without a chance of a clear presentation. I'd like to follow up that tonight. At that meeting, Mr. Leiter presented a PowerPoint presentation. One slide was the student density analysis map. That map was part of the environmental worksheet for the Western Middle School. It claimed to indicate a student population center in the vicinity of Wheeler Field Hill Site. My comments are included in that environmental worksheet. The points I made as a specialist in GIS, I'm certified, refuted the validity of that map, and that's what I spoke to at that meeting. I'll make no bones about it, I believe Central High School should have been the Western Middle School, or should have been the Middle School, the Central Middle School. It's already in place, the infrastructure is there, the school is relatively new, it was built in the 70s, rather than destroying acres of green space that, and also that topographically unsuitable site that is being under construction now for the Western Middle School. Mark my words, the surface water issues, drainage, is going to be a major, major issue with that building site. I come to you today before a buyer comes forth to urge you to possibly retain the Central High School campus. I would urge you not to sell that. Keep Central High School as an investment vehicle. They are not making hilltop sites with panoramic views of a city that's only destined to grow because of its beauty and because of its access to fresh water. This site is priceless, and only shortsightedness, monetary gain perhaps in lieu of the debt you have ahead of you in a depressed real estate market value would cause you to sell. School districts are no stranger to land investments. School trust lands are part of your financing. Look at the site as a resource. It could be a wind turbine site. It could be a secondary technical center over the whole campus. We could teach environmentally green jobs. We could supply energy to all the schools. The phone towers are already there. It would be no problem to permit wind turbines. So be forward-thinking. Please think about this breathtaking, valuable site and keep it for the future of the students and the citizens of Duluth. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next is Sam Searing, and after him is Alex Livestay.
Hello, school board members, Chair Ponco, Superintendent Dixon. It's been quite a while before I've said before you all. I've been away at college and just recently got back last week, but I've been keeping tabs on you all, trying to stay in the loop and everything. And so I'd just like to comment on a few things. First, I was watching the selection process for the new superintendent, and I think that Dr. Foster, I believe that's who was selected, will do quite an excellent job. I think that he's going to bring some very unique skills of coalition building to the city that are urgently needed in a time of moving forward, when we're transitioning between one model to a different model for our city. So I applaud you all on making a fine selection for the person to lead our school district for some years to come. Also, I'd just like to comment on the transition plan that was fairly instrumental last year in passing. I've heard that many parts of it have been used in implementation, and I'm very happy to hear about that. But one of the things that I've heard brought up is from a number of students at Central is that there is a decision at some level, whether it be at the school board or the administration level, that students who attended at least one year at Central would be unable to graduate with a Central diploma, whether they graduate at East or Denfeld. I just wanted to bring this up to see if it was true because that was actually one of the points that we really pushed for last year in our transition plan. And we really would like to see that if students feel that they attended Central for long enough, they should be able to graduate with a Central diploma that will actually have some symbolic importance to them, rather than graduating with an East or a Denfeld degree that might have been forced upon them. So if that is the case, I would encourage you all to reexamine that decision. And if it's not the case, I'm sorry, I was misinformed by some of the students at Central. But other than that, congratulations. And it was really impressive seeing you all work just reading through the Duluth News Tribune and watching some clips online. And let me tell you, down in Madison, it's a whole different civic game down there. You guys have it easy. I know that there has been some heated discussions during at least my time watching, but I can tell you, it wasn't even close. So just, you guys still have a ways to go before you can actually start getting angry with each other. So just know there are much worse scenarios to be in. So thank you all.
Thank you, Sam. Welcome back. Okay, Alex Livestay, and, oh, is that Sharon Witherspoon? I think so. She'll be next.
Thank you, Chair Ponco, and Superintendent Dixon, and the rest of the board. I'm part of Students for the Future, which is a student-run group, and we just kinda wanted to give you an update of what we've been working on this year, as well as our goals next year. Currently, we're helping keep the transition smooth, and one of our main goals for the next year is to help instill civility in the high schools. Due to this, we are going to implement Rachel's challenge. We have it approved by the city, so they are supporting us. Currently, we have about $5,000, which can support one school, but we want to do both of the high schools. Sorry, excuse me. We have $2,000 from State Schools, $1,000 from the Office of Equity Promised, and $2,000 from our school clubs. Just to kinda keep you updated, that's what we're doing. We wanted to make sure you're informed, so thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Sharon Witherspoon, and next will be Bevan Schra.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna be brief and to the point. I have three issues that I want to bring to your attention tonight. The first issue is that I want to applaud you also for the hiring of Dr. Foster, not because he's a person of color, but because he was well-qualified for the position. I was here at the last meeting, and it got a little heated, but that's a given in situations when change and historic decisions are made. We are, as a community, are looking forward to working here in the community, and I am not sure where you are in the process of negotiating this contract, but I do hope that all is going well and is done decently and in order and transparent. Also, as you began to meet the needs, or continue to meet the needs, the budget constraints, I strongly encourage you to keep the integration specialists intact, as this is a new paradigm, a new model for this district, and, believe me, other districts across the state is looking at this model. We just attended a conference in the cities two weeks ago, and it was mentioned in several of the workshops that I was in, and some of the integration specialists was there and they were sharing what they were doing. And the integration specialist is a component, a very key component to closing the achievement gap, as it contributes significantly to the support of the parents and our students. As I've attended several of the past graduations, and parents are coming out in schools, and so it is certainly having more parental involvement. The other issue I wanted to address was what the young man before me shared is my concern. I have some serious concerns about the beginning of school at Denfeld, so much so that I have asked the, Ron Haglen should have come to the administration, and the Education Equity Committee has, council has requested that someone come and share with us at our next board meeting, the plan, the transition plan, because we're seriously concerned about that and the lack of preparedness for all students concerned, not just students of color, but all students. And we need to be prepared, and we need to be, I need to be aware of that, we need to be aware of that and have some input in that. And thank you and have a good evening. I have other concerns, but I will address them at a later date. Bless you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next is Bevan Schra. Is there anyone else? Tell them that's okay.
Good evening. I just wanted to come to this board meeting tonight, just say a special thank you, especially to Dr. Dixon. When you compare where the district is today compared to where it was six years ago when this board, the school board, brought him to our city, it's a marvel. And Duluth is gonna reap the rewards for years and years and years to come. My newest grandbaby is, she's gonna be a Duluth school student and perhaps her children. It's gonna reap the rewards of the courage that it took to accomplish what has been accomplished. And I just couldn't let you leave Dr. Dixon without just taking this opportunity to thank you. And thank you not only for the buildings, but for the relationships that have been developed between all the staff that works for ISD 709. And being one that's been known to be critical of the board sometimes and the board members, I just want to thank you and congratulate you for coming together to have a unified welcome to the new superintendent. I just hope that you can keep this spirit of cooperation in front of you as you work with him in the transition. It might not be easy, but it's just important that that spirit that I saw from some votes that, a vote that surprised me, a unanimous, I think it's been ages since I saw something of importance to be come to a unanimous decision. I'm proud of you guys for doing that, in all sincerity. And I just wish you well as you work with the new superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Bevan. All right, we're gonna move on to reading communications petitions.
Members of the board, community, we have two listed written communications since our last meeting. The first one from Gary Glass, wanted his five resolutions that he requested the unregular meeting spindled, so that's the first item. Second item actually is from Dr. Foster, thanking you for your time and consideration during the superintendent search and expressing that he is honored to be the next superintendent. And I know in emails I've had with him, he's excited to be here, and certainly, as I've said to him, I'll do everything all the time he needs to help him be successful. So again, that's the other spindled piece of the information. Bevan, thanks for your comments. Thanks for your time on the board. You certainly also contributed to this journey along the way, and so thank you for those comments as well. To our student leaders, Sam, it's good to see you back from college. I would I would tell you that we are having three graduations. Actually, an interesting piece, just so you're aware in the community, actually, the Central and Denfeld graduations are going to be on the same evening, so that the students can then do their after-party together. And I, so I think that's another level of cooperation and as, proud of our students and what they've done. And certainly, Alex, thanks for being here tonight. And as you see, the Students for the Future are alive and well and doing some great work. They did a lot of work this year also on bullying with us in the schools, and I'm glad to see their work on Rachel's Challenge and the continued work we're doing to really work on those student relationships throughout the district. I also wanted to recognize Dr. Mary Cameron. You know, we are in the education business, and I just think anytime a person receives that honor of doctor, that's the highest honor in our field.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate you, because I think Mary represents that, you know, that really piece in all of us that says, continue to work, continue to study, continue to serve on a board of education, and do all that at the same time. It's a real honor to who you are as a person, and that's not easy to do, getting that doctor, as you know. And so, having been there and done that, I just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you.
Tonight, also, I want to recognize Mike Zeeman, who was Stowe Elementary School, is a recipient this year of the Goldfine Star Teacher Award. And that award was presented to him by Andy Goldfine's son, Manley, and Lilian made the announcement, and during that time, he was presented with a trophy and a $5,000 check, to use as he would like. He has a long list of accomplishments, a seasoned master teacher in our district, and it was, a number of you were there and saw and heard, really, from all of the teachers that were honored that night, how really special our staff is. So I wanted to recognize that. Also, congratulations to the Central-Denfeld students, Megan Rudd and Ellen Badger. They were selected to the 2011-12 Minnesota All-State Choir. I want to recognize Charlie Leefried. He was selected the Northeast Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals' Assistant Principal of the Year. Minnesota Association of Current Tech Administrators chose the STC Medical Occupations Instructor, Kim Olson, as their Teacher of the Year. STC's Culinary Arts Program Advisor Committee Board Member, Paul Madsen, was the Association's Business Advisory Committee Member of the Year. Lots of awards for our staff and our students. And finally, I wanted to congratulate the Woodland Middle School, had five individual students' entries selected at the Minnesota State History Day in Minneapolis. One of things, again, the last item I had, the Fred Hayes Family Scholarship for Central graduates is our second year of doing that, and Carl Watson is here to sort of help us complete that piece. Carl, are there a few things you want to say before we draw the names tonight?
Yes, Fred Hayes actually graduated from this building in 1915, and I want to thank the staff of Central High School for helping us find his picture in one of the yearbooks. And that's how we were able to figure out how to pronounce his name, because they do a little poem next to H1 of the pictures. And it rhymes with Hayes, that's how we know. Last year, we thought it was Hayes or Haas. So, we also know that he was an average student, but he did something special in his will. He left money for scholarships for students of Bemidji High School and Central High School here in Duluth. And this year, we were able to make a gift, it's a one-time gift of $3,500 to a name drawn out of a hat or the bowl. And so, Keith, I'd like to have you come down and draw the name, and then we're going to draw two alternates. The only qualification is, the student must go to school, college, next year. And I think it's a nice thing to do, so. And the winner is Lisa Olson. So congratulations, Lisa.
Wonderful. You finished?
Thank you, Superintendent Dixon. We really appreciate all these fine awards that are wonderful stuff and students.
Okay, we're going to move on to a report of standing committees. So, Member Watson, if you could take the Education Committee report, please.
This is the Education Committee report for May 17, 2011. Item one, we had some presentations. A was Minnesota Partnership for School Connectedness presentation, and B were the Data Coach and Integration Specialist update. Two, they're informational items. Grant application, there were none. Item three, action items. Item A is the presentation items requiring approval, there are none. Resolution found on page 32. Chair Panko, may I take that now? It's a resolution acceptance of grant awards of Duluth Public Schools. One was for Youth Service America. The second was Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation. The first was the $500, the second is for $16,000. I will move Resolution E511, 2878, May 17, 2011.
Okay, that's been moved by Member Watson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Cameron. So it's been moved by Member Watson, seconded by Member Cameron. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously.
Moving on, item C was extended trip request. The fifth grade students from Middleton traveled to the Science Museum. Item D, 2011-12 continuation of change in contractual day educational audiologist. And item E, diplomas, congratulation to Elizabeth Janetta. And that is the end of the Education Committee report. Madam Chair, I move the rest of the Education Committee report.
Thank you, Member Watson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Grover. Is there any discussion at all or any questions? Member Johnson?
Yeah, I'd just like to state here that we had a lot of very informative meetings and presenters at that, and I think Member Casper kind of made a joke to me afterwards that I'm often kind of quiet at these meetings, and as well expressed to the community, that I think that we're doing quite well on our education stuff. We have challenges, of course, but I think it was, and one reason I'm quiet is I don't have concerns about the things are going good. So it's nice when I get recognized for being quiet once in a while, so thank you. But more important is, I think we are recognizing the excellence that we're, while we're seeing the challenge, we're moving forward, and I really want to commend the people that didn't make presentations.
Thank you, Member Johnson. Okay, is there anything else? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the entire Education Committee report except for that resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. We'll move right into the Human Resources Committee report. Member Cameron.
This is the Human Resources Committee report for May 17. Under item one, staffer report, which are action items, there is one certified appointment, there is 27 certified co-curriculars, one certified extension, four certified leaves, two certified long-term subs, one certified resignation, there's seven certified retirements, three certified temporary decreases. For non-certified, there's three non-certified appointments, four non-certified extensions, 10 non-certified leaves, three non-certified permanent increases, three non-certified promotions, three non-certified resignations, two non-certified retirements, one non-certified temporary decrease, and one non-certified temporary increase. I'm going to move right into the other action items. The first one, I'm going to ask Tim to speak on, it's the approval of the superintendent individual contract, which is to a...
At our Monday Human Resource meeting, it was evident at that time that we wanted to step back and take a look at the process for working on this contract. There were some suggestions of having a meeting of the whole and committee meetings and conference with our attorney. Even for setting parameters, those meetings would be out in the open, as well as any subsequent meetings negotiating the contract would have to be an open meeting. I would like to caution against that, just from the standpoint of seven individuals trying to negotiate a contract with one individual with a bunch of different ideas of what that contract should look like. It's not really something that you would like to do out in the public, and it's something that would put under pressure between an incumbent or incoming superintendent and the board. We have, on purpose, have used our exec connect as kind of a go-between for this individual. Since last Monday, we have put aside the contract negotiations until we can come to an understanding of the process we want to take. Now, this has been explained to Dr. Foster, and it's not a matter of parts of the contract, it's just more of a matter of the process and having the board inclusive. In talking to Ken Dragseth, what he had mentioned to us is, in all the contract negotiations that he's worked with, it has been a committee of the school board, rather than a school board as a whole, maybe preferably about three individuals, but other individuals are feeding their information to those three individuals and then subsequently going on and negotiating the contract from that standpoint. And that is what our recommendation would be tonight, is to have a committee, have the board come to some terms on a committee, and then we can proceed with the contract negotiations.
I know, Tim, that I was one that, you know, raised a few questions at last week's board meeting, having sat in the prior superintendent's hiring. I have, since that time, expressed my concerns or ideas to the board chair, so I certainly do not feel that I should have a seat at the table at this point. I know that Judy has heard what I wanted addressed, but I would like to recommend that our chairperson of HR is definitely a person who sets up that committee.
Member Casper?
And I would like to offer as well that if the board chooses, that I would like to be on that committee as well, if seen that way, so.
Member Johnson?
I guess I'm a little bit concerned what I heard, Tim. I think that we have, yeah, the law does say that we're supposed to negotiate in the open, and that's what we're supposed to do. And what would be the problem with that? I would see that as what we should be doing. And we do hire the superintendent, so only employee that we do hire, and when I've talked to other MSDA people, they are always involved in that. And I guess I feel a little too much hesitation here, part not to include the board. So I'd like to remind the board that we just passed, I think, two months ago, that we are all on the negotiating committee, and this is one thing that we are negotiating. And I think we do have to all be involved. And having said that, I don't think there's anybody that I've talked to on the board informally here that has any particularly dissension or any conflict at all. I don't think there's any concern about what people are going to agree or disagree on. I think there's, I would suspect that there's a consensus on this board to move forward with the very good superintendent that we had. So I guess I'm concerned about, again, what's already been said, the delay has been taken that's went on so far. I think it's unnecessary, and I think that we should all be sitting down at the table. And I would like to commend Member Glass, who did put effort into putting out a contract, and that's the first thing that I've seen. And, you know, one of the speakers mentioned that we have to have transparency here, and I think we have to have to do that. That's what we've been talking about, and I see what's been presented so far from you, Tim, doesn't meeting that transparency. And I think we can and should do better, and we shouldn't be having these meetings. It should have happened, what, two weeks ago now? And I don't know why we're not having, you know, meetings. There's nothing wrong with having public meetings, as we're supposed to have public meetings when we negotiate contracts, so let's do it.
Member Grover?
I'd like to add my name as a volunteer for the subcommittee of the board, if we go that route, Chairman Chair. I have been involved in direct negotiation as a board member with a subcommittee directly negotiating with the superintendent, and there was given take, there always is, that's why they call it a negotiation. And I just can't quite imagine wanting to get into a position where we would be negotiating with an individual on his or her own behalf in public and having that back-and-forth process possibly appear on the 10 o'clock news or the front page of the newspaper. It would be very awkward, and I can't imagine myself as a new employee somewhere wanting to go through that in any way, shape, or form. So I, it's, it would be a very, very uncomfortable process for all those directly involved. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to Member Glass and then Member Cameron.
Thank you. I took the time to write out a motion in the terms of a resolution that would deal with a new superintendent's contract, and it's straightforward, and you all had a copy on the third day of May, which I had distributed through our Spind Letter system. It simply says, "We'll take the standard format recommended by the School Board Association for new superintendents and add the normal provisions that are peculiar to us. The compensation be clearly stated without hidden benefits. The goals and objectives be clearly stated as defined by our written bylaws and policies, regulations, and our vision of excellence. And that the new employee be fully protected and made aware of any medical hazards he may have here coming into this position in advance, starting the position." And if you've got the boilerplate, you've got the vision of excellence, the only thing you have to pencil in is the total compensation that we're offering. And so, I think that Tim already knows or has a feel for what that might be, so I don't see anything more than having that boilerplate with these words written down, and after half an hour, we could be ready to send it on. I don't, there's no, no pain, no discussion. And if the individual on the other end reads it and has questions, we answer the questions and be done with it. It's not a big deal. So I would be forward, or happy to move this ahead as fast as possible, be willing to do whatever is needed to get it done, and let's just move on with it. There's no reason to hesitate.
Okay, then, Cameron. I'm going to agree with Tim Sorsky that there be a small committee. And in the past, we have set parameters behind closed doors. We're told that we can't do that. There should be only three people, because we are seven board members, so I, remember Grover has expressed interest. I'm sure the chair wants to be there. So I will defer my spot to Member Justin or Member Glass, so that we can move forward.
I would accept that, or Member Cameron. And I guess moving forward, I don't really, but one question there. Now, if I understood Tim's idea right... Now, if I understood Tim's idea right, was we're gonna have a three-member committee. Is that a way to avoid open meeting law and avoid having to negotiate in public? Is that what that whole intent is?
I wouldn't say avoid. You're not officially having a board meeting with three members. The negotiation process in itself is, we're gonna have a number we probably won't exceed, and our candidate's gonna have a number that he probably won't accept. And it's that process of going back and forth, keeping that out of the public that would dissuade ideas of either our board members or our new superintendent about maybe ulterior motives or other issues that may arise with negotiating over that salary. While you're negotiating, you're not making a formal offer. Once you feel you have all the pieces in place, you can put that package together and make the formal offer, and that can be public. But what we try to do is get all the components in place that we feel we have an offer the candidate will accept.
Just, I mean, if the board wants to go ahead with that, I don't have any objection. But as long as we understand that we're gonna have complete transparency and we do communicate with each other. And again, I expect to, you know, if somebody asks me, and they better ask me, we expect to tell them what happened. And I'm assuming that's what the understanding I'm going into that, that if people ask us if we don't want to talk to the newspaper, we can hold off on that if the newspaper is patient. But nonetheless, we can, I'm willing to move forward again if the rest of the board is okay with that.
So just a clarification, and you're okay as long as you're a member of the three?
No, I mean, Mary asked me if I wanted to be, and, you know, and I-
I'm just asking for a clarification. You're okay as long as you're a member of the-
Are you, are you willing to volunteer in my place? No, I'm saying that the only reason I said it is Mary asked if I would, and I said, "Yes, I will." And, but it doesn't have to be me. I'd be willing to support-
And it's Member Glass?
If I'm not opposed to a three-person member, I just want to make sure we move forward and have some transparency.
And is Member Glass okay with that?
Member Glass would like to see Mary on the committee regardless.
Member Johnson, did you have something else? Okay. You know, and I think, I'll just make sure I clarify this, Tim. When a subcommittee does the negotiating a little bit, when they bring something to the entire board, I mean, that is just a, that doesn't mean it's been voted on. The entire board has to approve that then. So it's not really a contract until it's approved.
There will ultimately be a final contract that will go before the board for approval, before it's offered, yes.
Now, how should we do this? It's just a placeholder? Do we just, do we have to have a special school board meeting then in the next week or two, just to- So I can just appoint three people?
Yes, three people. It cannot be four. That constitutes a public meeting, so it cannot be four.
So I'm just trying to think, do we need to vote on anything tonight then? Just that we're gonna move forward with the subcommittee? So could I maybe have a motion for that?
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes.
If I may.
Member Grover, go ahead.
Okay. I would move to direct the chair to appoint a subcommittee of the board consisting of three board members to work with administration to come to an agreement on the superintendent contracts, superintendent's contract with Dr. Eddie Foster.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do you have that, Melinda? Thank you, Member Grover. So we have a motion on the floor by Member Grover, seconded by Member Casper. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. So I will follow up with that. I'll do that after the meeting. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Member Cameron.
Thank you, Tim. So moving on, 2B is a resolution. Termination of certified hourly staff. There are 20 names listed. Be it resolved by the School Board of Kinnis School District 79, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the employment of the following hourly teacher shall terminate effective at the end of the school day on June 10, 2011, unless another date is indicated below, in which case the employment of the individual shall terminate on that date. I move Resolution HR 5112880 dated May 17, 2011.
Okay, that's been moved by Member Cameron. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Grover. Is there any discussion? Member Casper?
Tim, how many FTEs is this total for these 20 folks?
For the hourly staff and for the long-term subs, I did not total those. This is a, these two resolutions are generally year-end housekeeping. We do not retain hourly teachers throughout the summer. They're usually brought in to fill in gaps, either in some title money or whatever. So they're not officially considered on contract. So for the most part, I did not total this. The maximum they could be is a .4 FTE. The majority of them are about a .15 FTE. Less than 14 hours a week.
Thank you.
Member Johnson?
Where are I and B, is that correct? Yeah, okay. Just a question. This is probably the first of all, B, C, and D. And did you just say that this is just normal bookkeeping and that you expect to hire these people back likely? I mean, assuming that everything is fine next fall? Do I understand that correctly?
On number B that we're working on, again, these are people that might help come in with reading or prepping for tests. Hourly, we do have hourly people. This is really normal, year-to-year. This is a normal amount. On the long-term subs, both are teachers who are in for individuals who might be on medical leave, maternity leave, not absent for some reason longer than a period of 30 days. So these are people who are taking the places of regular teachers who are unable to work at this time for various reasons. The third resolution on D, these would be certified teaching staff that we would be losing in the district.
Okay, if I recall on the committee meeting, you estimated somewhere it was close to maybe about 15 FTEs. That was an estimate, but it was somewhere in there. Is that in the ballpark?
Yeah, we're not there yet in D, but I estimated 14. I think on there, we ended up with 12.
Okay. Again, for the, can I talk about item C? We're kind of lumping this together generally. Again, you know, why are we doing this? Is this again to address our budget shortfall? Or is that to where, you know, particularly for item D? Is that what we're doing here, or just give me some reason why we're doing this?
That would be correct.
Thanks.
Member Grover? Okay, so we're going to, we're gonna vote on letter B, on the resolution. Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Okay, Member Cameron, go ahead with the next one.
2C is also a resolution, termination of certified long-term substitutes. There are nine names listed. Be it further resolved, the Quikr school boards will also notify such teachers in writing before July 1, 2011. I move HR 5112881 dated May 17, 2011.
Thank you, Member Cameron. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Member Grover. I know these are hard decisions to make. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Yes, I have a question.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Member-
Could you give us an estimate of the amount of dollars that we're talking about that is causing this to happen? You said due to the loss of staff, or no, loss of students?
You know, the proper term for it is lack of students. And what I would say is, if you have a reduction of students by about 300 students, that would equate to approximately 10 to 12 teachers. Additionally, would be, you know, when we made the choice to increase the class size by one student, that's approximately a million dollars in the district, and that would equate to another 10 or 12 teachers. So if you, that's what I can give you, dollars. Salary-wise, these individuals would be as younger teachers at the lower end of the spectrum, but we use a composite number for calculating our teaching needs and applying teachers to our different sites.
So these reductions are based on 300 students being lost? Or the million dollars being short?
That and the additional students in the classroom, yes. Out of our budget considerations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna vote on this resolution. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, that is 5-2 with Members Glass and Johnston voting against. Okay, and the last one, Member Cameron?
This resolution is termination of certified probationary non-tenure staff. Whereas during the first three years of consecutive employment, all teachers in the public schools and cities of the first class are deemed to be in a probationary period of employment through which period the school board may renew or not renew any teacher's annual contract, as the school board shall see fit. And the district will lack a sufficient number of pupils to support all non-tenure teachers currently employed by the district. There are 12 names listed. I move Resolution HR 5112882 dated May 17, 2011.
Thank you, Member Cameron. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Casper. Is there any discussion? Member Casper?
Tim, of these 12 names, could you tell me what each of them, what each of them teach for us?
Well, there are a number of special ed students on here that are special ed teachers on here that were teaching under variances for this last year. There are some math, as well as-
Any music?
On this group, no. Our music group is more of a seasoned staff where we would not have, these are non-tenure teachers at this time that have not completed the three consecutive years. So there are no music people on this group.
Okay, about equivalent of how many FTEs is this?
I wrote it on one of the papers I put up there, but I think it was 10.15.
Oh, I didn't, okay.
No, I, my copy I left up there, so, but I believe that's what it was, 10.15. I do want to make a correction to Member Glass, too, because I thought he was referring to this resolution. This resolution would apply to lack of students where the long-term subs are just substitute, long-term substitute teachers and therefore other teachers out on various leaves.
So any of these, you've mentioned, are special education teachers. Is this part of, then, those budget considerations that we talked about two months ago as far as the cuts we were making to special education?
Because these members, a number of them are on variances, they would be terminated because they do not have, their variance is only good for the one practicing year. And then we have to demonstrate that we've actively looked for licensed special education teachers to fill these various vacancies. There are vacancies in special education. And we have, in the years I've been here, we have hired teachers into those positions every year. That's one of my recommendations for people going into teaching, get that special ed license.
None of these teachers are elementary ed?
No.
And you had mentioned that last week's committee meeting that we potentially are looking at hiring, I think you said one at that point. Does that number change?
Yeah, the number of displacements are essentially equal to the number of vacancies. So on paper, it's a natural just switch. What happens in actual practice is we may have a elementary special ed teacher want to go into normal elementary, or somebody else coming from another area in elementary. That creates issues that we'll have to resolve later because it could result in stranding back into positions. But essentially, we're, it's kind of a wash at elementary. We'll be placing as many as we displaced in there. Of the tenured teachers, there should not be any layoffs, if maybe one.
Okay. And this isn't our entire staff of non-tenure teachers?
No, no, we have retained some non-tenure teachers in positions that there were needs, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Member Johnson?
Yeah, I asked this on last week, too, and they didn't have an answer. I will ask you again, though, is that, I think you said next month we're gonna be looking at certified teachers, tenured teachers. Any idea yet how many that will be?
I can give you a tentative number right now. What we'd be looking at is probably about 26 individuals comprising a 17.5 FTE.
Okay, yeah, thanks. And the reason I'm asking is that we all hear from people, and it does cause a lot of angst in the community when this stuff happens. And, you know, I think it'd be nice to say that the speaker just said that if someone lost a job, that's always fine. Most people don't feel that way. And the people that have talked to me and indicated to me don't feel that way. And it causes me a lot of angst as well to have to look at this. And we're gonna be doing it again next month and probably for a while. And that's, it doesn't make me feel good.
I can say, and it's not any consolation, but I do want to bring it up. On this list of non-tenure teachers, five of these teachers were laid off or were terminated last year and rehired. So I mean, you know, it does have, there's things that do take place during the summer. We have other people that decide to retire, other leaves that are taken, maybe other funding sources that come through in the way of grants and not the traditional general funds. So, you know, there's possibility for these names and the names we see next month that they'll be back by the time school starts.
That's what I hope that happens. I mean, that's what we want. We've got some experienced teachers. But yet on the other hand, they're coming back because somebody else retired or moved on, and that's certainly good for the people that are coming back. But still, I mean, we are still losing teachers, though. And ultimately, it's still not good.
Okay. Nothing else? Okay, we're gonna vote on this resolution. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, so that is 5-2 with Member Johnson and Member Glass voting against. Okay, Member Cameron, you wanted to finish that up?
Okay, there are no informational items at this time, and there are no HR future items at this time. And so, Members Legal Puncle, I'd like to move the remaining HR committee report.
Thank you, Member Cameron. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Moved by Member Cameron, seconded by Member Casper. Is there any other discussion? Okay, let's vote on the rest of the HR report, the action items. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the business committee report. Member Grover?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First page, section one is recurring monthly financial reports. Item H, investments in school children. One item, Edwin, we continue to work with the Edwin Eddy Foundation to procure another donation for sound application systems for Duluth Schools classrooms. Section I is under a heading of expenditures. We have three items discussed at the business committee involving either an elimination of expenditure or an addition of expenditures. These regard at attorney use at board meetings, additional transportation services, primarily, but not only for zero-hour purposes, and three to install security equipment in this building, historical Central High School. All three items are just informational at this point and additional information gathering. And analysis is going to be done by administration to be brought back to the board. Section two, bids, RFPs, and quotes. We have two bids, one for refuse removal and recycling services. Recommendation is to approve a contract with Nordic Waste Services. Second one is the food requirements, district-wide and tribal nutrition area. Recommendation is that the low bid submitted by Upper Lakes Foods be accepted. RFPs, we have one regarding, recommendation that we accept a proposal for, from Great Lakes Office Solutions for Canon Copier Service Contract. Quotes, there are several regarding, I guess you could say, hourly, hourly labor in different trades for summertime primarily, although not only summertime. This would be bricklayers, cement masons, plumbers, roofers, and then also district-wide lawn care services for 2011. There is, moving on to the fifth page, I believe it is, is regulation, under policies and regulations, Regulation 3187R. and regulations, Regulation 3187R, in response to an agenda request from a board member. Please note that this regulation already prohibits the use of district technology for, quote, "communicating for illegal purposes, including but not limited to political lobbying", end quote. Uh, contracts, change orders, and leases. We have, uh, a recommendation to renew the PEI... let's see, that's Minnesota Public Employees Insurance Program Contract for the period 7/11 through 6/32. Rates are decreasing by eight percent. And the second item was, uh, we had a discussion at the business committee, uh, about the use of... possible use of parliamentarian services, and there seemed to be board consensus that, uh, we will not pursue this at this time. We have change orders at Denfeld High School, Eastern... the Eastern Middle School, East High School, and then, uh, no leases, and then, section five is the resolutions. And Madam Chair, would you like me to move forward with the resolutions at this time?
Sure.
Okay, the first one is on page 80, and this is release and pledge of collateral. Be it resolved by the Board of IST 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that hereby releases the following instruments pledged as collateral by Marshall M. Isley-Eisley, MNI, which is the MNI Bank, uh, and there are two... two-dollar amounts listed, and be it further resolved by the Board that it accepts the pledge collateral of a $575,000 par value GNMA, not maturing a 2038, uh, CU SIP number shown, and extends for the released collateral noted above. Move Resolution B 511-2888, May 17, 2011.
Thank you, Member Grover. Is there a second to the resolution?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Member Casper. Is there any discussion on this? Member Johnson?
Yeah, we didn't talk about this on the committee. Could you fill me in? I... again, I don't understand all this, but we are pledging a collateral of $575,000, but yet we're giving up a collateral of, uh, $20,750,000. Just explain. I assume there's some sense to that, but it certainly seems out of line, so could you explain that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, yes, you... you saw it correctly. Um, given that we had long-range facility, um, plan funding, uh, help... assets held, uh, pending, uh, construction, we had to receive pledge collateral from MNI to, uh, secure the assets that they were holding on our behalf, uh, that we purchased on CDs and what have you. So, under the state statutes, the... a bank institution has to have 110% of the, um, of the asset pledged as collateral to secure in case of default, so that we can, uh, go back and... and, uh, go against that pledged collateral. So, in this particular case, uh, two securities matured, and MNI wanted to get out from underneath us holding, uh, that collateral, pledged collateral, so that's what this is all about. The new... the new, uh, investments that we have with MNI are only about $400,000.
So you're comfortable with this anyway? You're covering all our liabilities, you're covered fine. I'm assuming that's what you're saying here, right? I think the dollar's a little surprised, but, uh, uh, thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna vote on this resolution. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Point, Member Grover?
Okay, Madam Chair, the next five resolutions all relate to the closing of schools, and if it's okay with you and with the board, I will, uh... the resolutions are short. I'll read the first one in its entirety regarding Laura MacArthur, but for the next... the remaining four, I'll just basically plug in the name of the school and not read the whole resolution. Does that sound... but it sounds like it worked okay. Uh, first one, resolution on page 81, resolution closing Laura MacArthur Elementary School. Whereas a public hearing was held on May 2nd, 2011, on the proposed closing of Laura MacArthur Elementary School, whereas during this hearing, people wishing to give testimony for and against the proposed closing were heard, and such testimony was considered by the school board, whereas published notice of this hearing was given in compliance with Minnesota statutes, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of IST 709 as follows. One, the attached findings and conclusions regarding the closing of Laura MacArthur Elementary School are hereby adopted. Two, the closing of Laura MacArthur Elementary School is necessary and practicable. Three, Laura MacArthur Elementary School is closed effective at the end of the 2010-11 school year, and four, at this time, the board does not take any action with respect to the possible sale of the Laura MacArthur Elementary School building or property. I move Resolution B 511-2883, May 17, 2011.
Thank you, Member Grover. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Watson. Is there a discussion? Member Johnson?
Sure.
And I think I know what this means, but this means we're not closing Laura MacArthur School, isn't that correct? Uh, again, uh, having... having, uh, talked to my attorneys over this since we've been discussing these hearings for a long time, uh, I... when you close the... or this... we're not closing Laura Mac School, we're not changing the grade configuration, we're just building a new school across the street, and we didn't have to have a hearing for that kind of a... that kind of a move because it wasn't necessary. And again, I'm just saying here that, uh, again, uh, we had a hearing which wasn't necessary.
Member Johnson? Member Casper?
And I... I guess I would sort of, in a way oddly echo that, that are we going to reopen Laura Mac then in the fall?
In essence, there are... there are really two Laura Mac buildings right now. This closes one of those two. Uh, our attorney believes that the interpretation is simply to do the official closing of the old building, even though there's a new one right across the street.
So we have two addresses to Laura Mac's closing?
I don't know if the address has changed, but it has changed.
Okay, okay.
And again, that... well, I mean... Yeah, again, uh, just for clarification, this came up in Morgan Park, uh, was it 25 years ago, whenever that was, and... and, uh, there was, uh, citizens that brought action because the school was changing grade configuration, and the Minnesota Supreme Court ruled that, uh, there was not necessary to have a hearing at that point. And... and again, reading the case history, it's right in their backyard, it wasn't necessary, but, uh, again...
Member Grover?
Yeah, I think... I think the... and I appreciate Dr. Dixon pointing out that we did check with legal counsel. I don't think we approved this. I think there was some informal discussion up front on whether this was actually necessary. And... and it is, in fact, a separate and distinct site that... that the new building is going on to, so, uh, I... I don't doubt that it... that it is legally necessary to do, even though it was a... a little bit of expense and inconvenience, so...
Member Glass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was, uh, looking over the record and was, uh, searching for the items that are not... that included but are described. It says, "Written transcript of tonight's hearing along with all exhibits will be provided to the school board." I take it the exhibits are existing somewhere, they're just not given to us at this time?
Uh, the exhibits mentioned are... are and have been on the website for quite a while. They continue to be there.
Okay, so they need to be made part of this record in order for it to be complete?
They were read into the record and are part of the record, yes.
The visual portrayal of what was on the screen is what we need. If you're going to make this record complete, you're gonna have to have those... those...
The presentation is on the website, too, if that's what you're asking.
Well, it isn't gonna be there when this... this record is put into the archives. You need to have a written or a visual comment of the copies of the figures that are there.
We have copies, yes.
So, they'll be made part of the record, then? Great, thank you.
Okay, we're ready to vote on this resolution. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, that was five-two, correct? That was Member Johnson and Member Glass voting against it. Okay, Member Grover, keep points.
Resolution closing Lincoln Park Elementary School is found on page 86. Okay. Whereas a public hearing was held on May 2nd, 2011, on the proposed closing of Lincoln Park Elementary School, in the same language as, uh, as on the Laura MacArthur Resolution, skipping to item three, Lincoln Park Elementary School is closed effective at the end of the 2010-11 school year. At this time, the board does not take any action with respect to the possible sale of the Lincoln Park Elementary School building or property. Move Resolution B 511-2884, May 17, 2011.
Seconded by Member Watson. Okay, any discussion? Member Johnson?
Yes, I do have some comments on this one. Uh, first of all, on page three of the hearing record, the hearing officer failed to properly state the Minnesota Statute 123B dot 51, which states procedures a school must follow, and I'm quoting again, "The board must close a school only after a public hearing on the question parties requesting to give testimonies shall be heard by the board before it makes a final decision to close or not close a schoolhouse." Our school did not follow this law. Uh, in fact, on June 17, 2007, this board passed Resolution B dash six dash oh seven dash twenty-four fifty-seven, which had the title, "Approving a Long-Range Facility Plan and Authorizing Further Proceedings Toward Implementation of That Plan." And this resolution states further, "The board authorizes all necessary actions to immediately implement the plan." And now, here we are, having a hearing almost four years after the school clearly decided to close Lincoln Park. Uh, anyone that has seen the construction or been following this issue, which is everybody in Duluth, knows that a decision to close the school was made long ago, way before this hearing, and, uh, and this hearing is an insult to Duluth citizens. Uh, there are many questions and accuracies, and misleading statements in the administration's presentation at the hearing, and in this motion which follows in our book. I'm gonna state just a few of them for the record. It was stated in the hearing that in 2010-11 consolidation of the RED Plan gave a savings of approximately 4.4 million. That disagrees with the information given to the school board on February 8, 2011, which states that in two years, 2010 and 11, the savings were only 2.3 million, not 4.4, that it was mainly by reducing staff, not closing buildings. And in those two years, uh, $5.6 million was transferred out of the general fund to fund the RED Plan. So even if the legislation takes place, no matter how you measure it, the idea of closing Lake Lincoln Park and the RED Plan, uh, costs more than those insignificant savings that were claimed at the hearing. Uh, motion item number 18, 19, and 20 in our booklet, uh, while I mention that, it states that Lincoln Park has a disposal value of $610,000. Should be pointed out that the RED Plan is to sell its property to help pay for the RED Plan. While we're working to find a use... we're... we're hoping to find a use for this building, it is very unlikely that any of the interested users will come up with this $600,000. This building will likely be lost to the community, which is incidentally on historical records. Uh, motion item number 13, I want to mention, it was claimed that closing Lincoln would save the district $213,000. There was no substantiating data that had been presented to the board to back up these numbers. More important, even if those numbers are correct, at a cost of $17 million for the new Piedmont School, that savings of 213 represents a payback to the district of only of 85 years. Uh, and that's not counting the time value of money. In other words, this new building will likely be torn down long before it's ever paid back. Uh, uh, so there is no payback. Uh, motion item number seven, the states have the combined Lincoln Park, the new Piedmont School have a combined student total of 1,600 students. That's completely bogus. There has never been a plan to operate both of these schools concurrently, and, uh, and to make this statement was disingenuine by the administration. Uh, motion item number 10, 13, and 20, uh, I'd like to just talk about. A state's closing Lincoln Park will eliminate the use of an excess building. That's baloney. Uh, we are not rebuilding... by not rebuilding Piedmont, that would have also had eliminated an excess building, which would have also... which we just got or in the process of building, and not building that building would have saved us $18 million, not to mention not to have an excess building to get rid of. Uh, so that's another very misleading statement. Uh, motion item number 23 in our packet also says, uh, uh, this is a justification that this... as part of the justification for this, this was a study done by Johnson Controls. Uh, this report was very questionable and was never checked by a professional second opinion, except for one. The RED Plan facility defect list listed by Johnson Controls put the cost of modernizing the existing Lincoln Park at 15.4 million. But a citizens group got a second opinion from architectural firm ATSNR, and they put the cost of modernizing Lincoln at 3.4 million, or $12 million less, or 78% less than the numbers ever used by Johnson Controls in the school district justify this closure. Also not mentioned is the fact that the old Piedmont and the Lincoln Park had significant building projects as recently as 2000, only 10 years ago. All these investments are lost despite the fact that at the time, there was similar justification on building these projects would save the district a lot of money, and these are now gonna turn into rubble.
Okay, we're ready to vote on this resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, was that five-two? Member Glass? Okay, with Members Glass and Johnson voting against it. Okay, Member Grover?
Next resolution is on page 91, resolution closing Lester Park Elementary School. Whereas a public hearing was held on May 5th, 2011, on the proposed closing of Lester Park Elementary School, closing of Lester Park Elementary School is necessary and practicable. Lester Park Elementary is closed effective at the end of the 2010-11 school year. At this time, the board does not take any action with respect to the possible sale of the Lester Park Elementary School building or property. Move Resolution B 511-2885, May 17, 2011.
Seconded. Moved by, um, Member Grover, seconded by Member Watson. Is there any discussion? Member Glass?
Yeah, so are there any changes in the, uh, in the item four implied by this? Don't... isn't the building scheduled for demolition so the property can be used for playgrounds? Isn't that cor... correct?
That's correct.
So it's... it's not for possible sale. It's for incorporation into the site for use by the educational system. So that... that perhaps wants to be modified a little bit, so it reads that way. I have some other question. Could I ask that, Madam Chair? I have another question?
Go ahead.
Uh, this... this record, like the one for Lincoln Park, doesn't have copies of the exhibits. Will they be made part of the written record when it's archived also?
Sorry, Member Glass, could I ask you to repeat that, please?
Yes, the same question I asked about Laura MacArthur with the exhibits, you'll make them part of the record that's archived?
Yes.
And same thing for Lincoln Park, also?
Yes.
All will have the exhibits. They've been read into the record, and will be on each of them.
Okay, and... but each set is different, so they... they have to have their own sets. Great. Thank you.
Member Johnson?
Okay, my concern is like on Laura Mac. These hearings weren't necessary. Uh, Lester Park is not changing grade configuration, nor are we removing Lester Park, and, uh, not necessary to have Lester.
Okay, well, oh, Member Glass, you have something else?
I have to ask one more question that... that I came into this board with, and that is, the, uh, the students at Lester Park are... are well-recognized for their high achievement and being in the... in the upper 6% in the state. I asked at that time, what additional achievement are they going to see by having... having a brand-new building? Are they in fact going to creep up to the upper 2% from the upper 6%? Uh, it didn't seem to me at that time that... that spending $20 million was a very worthwhile investment, when you could repair the existing building for, uh, a third of that or less. And then, once the... the additional study was done that showed that the Rock Ridge Site would in fact be capable of being expanded for a complete elementary, with ATSNR's study of it, it became even, uh, a more interesting... a more interesting problem of putting the site in a, in a highly congested area and, and not having the adequate, uh, facilities that the Minnesota Department of Education Guidelines for elementary say it should have. Rock Ridge with its 18 acres is a lot better suited to provide those type of, of support facilities than, than is the new Lester Park. So it, it still seems to be an unwise investment, uh, for both increasing student achievement and for providing the future needs in an area that's still quite congested and you don't have the, the Minnesota Department of Ed specs that we need to have for that site. So, uh, that's a, that's a continuing reason why I was elected to this position to tell you, it seems like a bad plan. And so, uh, it should be improved in, in any way possible, and, and right now, there's no possibility of improving it unless you're going to take more houses, uh, and expand the playgrounds and other support facilities. So I'll not be supporting this, uh...
Member Casper?
I don't know a lot about buildings. I really don't. Um, but having spent some time in Lester Park, and especially of these schools, the conditions in the Lester Park building, completely inaccessible for anybody with, uh, mobility issues. Matter of fact, knowing several families whose children sustained injuries and couldn't attend that school and had to go to other schools just because they were confined to crutches or a wheelchair, um, and no real way of accommodating that because of various levels, uh, without major expenditure. Um, an insufficient gymnasium in the basement, the cafeteria in the, in what used to be the, the auditorium, I believe, the main entries, entry off of a, off of what looks like the service entrance to the school. Um, that school, above all, that I visited and, and met with staff on, um, seemed to me, and again, just my opinion, not an expert on construction, but recognizing that the significant need just for structural change, it may not affect kids' grades at all. Um, but it's certainly going to affect, um, how kids perceive their school and how that neighborhood perceives their community. So I'm in support of that school being rebuilt the direction it's gone, so...
What else here?
Uh, sure. Uh, and Lester Park is one of those things similar to many of our other schools. Us people that were, had concerns about the RED Plan, we're not against modernizing our schools. That was never an issue. Nobody wanted to, uh, stop, uh, handicap accessibility or stop mold growth or anything. The ATSNR group totally addressed that, including replacing all heating plants, having a, uh, elevator, handicap access to everything, and there was absolutely no question at all that these things could have been addressed at a fraction of the cost that, uh, the RED Plan gave. And again, Lincoln Park is an example. It was, uh, could have been fixed for the $3 million instead of, uh, 14 that JCI said, and eventually the 18 or 20 that was spent on Piedmont. A similar thing could be, uh, said about Lester Park as well. Again, nobody wanted to oppose fixing it. We were just opposed to closing Rock Ridge and all the other things that added to it.
Let me add one more thing. Uh, my, both of my kids went to Lester Park, so I'm, I'm very familiar with the building, and, uh, and gladly to acknowledge that the teachers are very dedicated and the children do get an excellent education there. That's, that's not the debate. We're simply wanting to, to put the best future site for spending that kind of money. And if you're going to spend that kind of money, then you want it on a site where you can have the amenities that the Minnesota Department of Education says you should have. And so, it, it's the same mistake that has been made in a number of other areas where you try to cram it in too small a site, particularly at Lester Park Rock Ridge, when you have an 18-acre site available. It could have been made into a first-class elementary school with not spending nearly the amount of money, but still have the amenities of 18 acres. Uh, and I, I could go down the list, but I'll, I can't not stop at, and say that Ordine is an even worse example of where we need more space. And so, you're simply not going to be able to get what you need to have, uh, by these sites. And hindsight is, is, is always 20/20, uh, but I asked the question four years ago, why couldn't we use Rock Ridge? And the answer by the architects was, we could. We could have. We could have done it. There is a plan. We, we, in fact, this board funded that plan, and ATSNR has got four plans and the like that costed out at the Rock Ridge site rather than the Lester Park site. So it's, it's a matter of making sure you make the best investment and the best, best choices, and we...
Okay. Thank you, Member Glass. We're going to go ahead and vote on this resolution. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that's 5-2 again, with members Glass and Johnson going against it. Okay, Member Grover?
Next resolution is on page 97, Resolution Closing Rock Ridge Elementary School, where as a public hearing was held on May 5, 2011, on the proposed closing of Rock Ridge, the closing of Rock Ridge Elementary School is necessary and practicable. Rock Ridge Elementary is closed effective at the end of the 2010-11 school year. At this time, the board does not take any action with respect to the possible sale of the, uh, Rock Ridge Elementary School building or property. Move Resolution B-5112886, my, excuse me, May 17th, 2011.
Seconded by Member Grover, seconded by Member Watson. Uh, Member Johnson?
For the record, I want to show that my previous statements on Lincoln Park, most of them all apply equally well to, uh, Rock Ridge, the inaccuracies, the only difference would be the numbers on the motions and the specific numbers that were presented at the hearing, and I believe that those are misleading and an error and are falsely represented, uh, represent what was happening by this, this school district to the city.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and vote on this? All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
No.
Same 5-2. Okay.
Final resolution is on page 103, Resolution Closing Central High School, where as a public hearing was held on May 3, 2011, on the proposed closing of Central High School, closing of Central High School is necessary and practicable. Central High School is closed effective at the end of the 2010-11 school year. At this time, the board does not take any action with respect to the possible sale of the Central High School building or property. Move Resolution B-5112887, May 17th, 2011.
Seconded. Thank you. Member Grover, seconded by Member Watson. Any discussion? Member Johnson?
Uh, yes, I do want to make comments, and, uh, some of these will be repeated, but most of them will not be from the previous comments on Lincoln. Again, I want to again point out, page three of the hearing, the hearing officer failed to properly state the Minnesota Statute, and I'll quote that again so people get it. The board may choose to school, close the schoolhouse only after public hearing on the question. Parties requesting to give testimony shall be heard by the board before it makes a decision to close or not to close. Our school did not follow that. Uh, again, I will again quote Resolution B-6072457, passed by this board on June 19, 2007, with the title, "Approving a Long Range Facility Plan and Authorizing Further Proceedings for Implementation of the Plan." And this resolution states, "The board authorizes all necessary actions to immediately, uh, implement the plan." And again, pointing out to the community, which the community clearly knows that this, uh, we're now having a hearing four years after the school clearly decided to close Central High School, and clearly after we failed to follow this law, the decision was made four years ago. We're not making the decision. That was made four years ago. There's absolutely no question in anybody's mind on that. Uh, again, anybody who sees the construction is very clear. Now, more specifically on this, uh, uh, again, there are again many, uh, questions and inaccuracies and misleading statements in, uh, administration's presentation at the hearing, and that are contained in this motion, and to state a couple of them. It was stated in 2010 and 11 that the consolidation of RED Plan would save approximately 4.4 million. Again, that disagrees, uh, with the information given to the board on February 8, 2008, which states it was only 2.3 million. And that was by reducing staff, not closing buildings. And of course, we also have already passed, uh, $5.6 million out of the general fund to fund the RED Plan, and these goes two years. Exactly. There's no question on that. Um, uh, motion item number 13 in the following pages, it was claimed that closing Central will save the district, uh, $1 million. Again, there is no substantiating data, no backup spreadsheets, no nothing. They were just presented. We've still asked for that substantiating data. It has yet to be presented. More important, these numbers are, even if these numbers are correct, and at, I don't know what the latest costs of Benfild and East, I believe it's $60 million. That's a payback of 60 years. And who's kidding who here? Uh, uh, in 60 years, these buildings will all be rebuilt again. This is not a payback. This is not to save money. Uh, again, on motion item number seven, the states at the combined Central, Benfild, and East have a combined student total of 4,800 people. Again, this is extremely disingenuine and misleading by the administration. There has never been a plan to operate all these three schools at once. Trying to say that suddenly we have 4,800 capacity, therefore let's close Central, is really disingenuine. Uh, that was never the intent. Uh, motion number 26, this is used as justification by the study, uh, by Johnson Controls. Again, that was a facility report issued back in 2006. Again, this report was very questionable and was never checked by a professional second opinions. The RED Plan Facility Defect List listed by JCI put the cost of modernizing Central High School at 21.4 million. Again, a citizens group got a second opinion from architectural firm ATSNR, and they put the cost of modernizing Central only 7.5 million, or $14 million, or 66% less than the numbers that were used to justify this closure. Uh, also mentioned is the fact that the secondary technical campus was only built 15 years ago. 15 years ago. Uh, now, it's going to hit the wrecking ball again. It's Keynesian economics at its worst. Uh, probably, what's the estimated cost, uh, value of Central? Uh, what does the school have invested in that? Probably $100 million in both secondary technical campus and the new Central, which incidentally was only built, uh, 30 years ago, and one of the newest buildings, uh, in the district. And so, we literally are getting a dime on the dollar by doing this. I also want to go back and talk about, uh, motion items number 18, 19, and 20. Here it states that Central High School and Central Secondary Technical Campus has a disposal value of 13 million. Um, uh, this site overlooks the city of Duluth, the world's busiest inland harbor, and 10% of the world's fresh water, which is Lake Superior. Uh, this is clearly the most spectacular property in Duluth. The school's a spirit of core, and its students and its faculty achievement match the unlimited horizon of this school and this location. This will be lost forever. And, uh, this is a black mark in this city, and I think it's, uh, we have to vote no for this.
Okay, we're ready. Oh, Member Glass?
Yes, I would say, uh, I second all of the things that Member Johnson said with two additions. I've been asking to see the demographics data since day one for the original long-range facilities plan, and it's not been made available to me as of this date. I made another request within the last three months, and it's still not been made available. I asked to see the master spreadsheets that JCI developed showing the savings that they used to justify the entire RED Plan, and those spreadsheets have not yet been made available. Uh, by hiding the information that they say is the main justification for this plan only serves to make it more divisive and more controversial. So it is unfortunately the result of hiding the data, not making it available, that keeps the whole controversy alive. Had we been 100% transparent, we wouldn't be talking today like we are, and we wouldn't be raising these issues. But by not having the information available, one can only surmise the same thing that the city of Duluth found, or the county of St. Louis found, is that the savings that were stated to be made and gained by doing this plan are not going to be realized. So we have real concrete examples of an equivalent status showing us that, that the information, uh, that they've not given us is not given us because it is not valid. And so, we can only press on with that assumption that we are not going to save the money that the plan says we're going to save. We're going to have to be able to come up with the payback money from other sources because it's not going to be there. That's the only conclusion you can draw. And the other conclusion is, by not showing us the demographics data, you just hide the fact that we've got subpopulations within this town that are not going to be able to get to school, or the transportation issues are going to dramatically increase for them. And we do have at least one letter from a county commissioner asking, what are we going to do about the, the Indian, uh, the Lincoln Park school site where the kids now are having trouble getting to, to school on time? How are we going to deal with that? And that's an unanswered question, and I also sponsored a resolution to, to do the same for the, the students in the Central Hillside, that we need to, to give other options to get these kids to the schools that we're now, uh, providing their education for them. Uh, it's something that isn't going to go away. It's something that hasn't been addressed. There never was a transportation study done as part of the RED Plan. I pointed that out early and, and in multiple times, and we still don't have one, and we still are going to have a major transportation mess to deal with. So that's another reason why this is a plan that has defects that haven't been dealt with, and we're stuck with it.
Member Johnson?
Just to, uh, you know, I could have said a lot more and, uh, to spare the board pain hearing me anymore. I quit, uh, you know, there are many, many objections to this plan that I've stated in the past. And, uh, I do want to say one more thing here that, uh, that last time I was at, uh, West Duluth Business Club, there was a question, many questions, not at that club, but I'll use that as an example, as people saying, "What? You're getting rid of the most spectacular property in Duluth?" And, uh, there was two comments on that. One, uh, comments were made to me that, uh, the school doesn't deserve that kind of property. Uh, that was by a member of the school administration. And two, the response at the time, uh, by the mayor, who had happened to be asked this question, and that is that this, uh, community can't afford to lose this kind of spectacular property. We must keep it, uh, in the hands, and again, uh, of course, the district is planning to fund the RED Plan with this, not, uh, put it into, uh, other usage for the community, and I'm hoping that also changes.
Okay, we're going to vote on this? All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, that's 5-2 with members Glass and Johnson voting against it. Okay, Member Grover?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The remainder of the report involves the informational items, um, and I will move the, the business committee report as a whole, except for the resolutions which have already been acted on.
Okay, thank you, Member Grover. Is there a second for the entire business?
Second.
Seconded by Member Casper. Okay, are there any questions or items to be required? Um, Member Johnson?
Not sure. Uh, 1A, these are for discussion.
1A?
1A. 1F. Uh, 1, or I, I-1. Um, uh, 3-1. Was it 3B-1? Page, uh, I don't know what page it is. Uh, 4A-1, and 4A-2.
That's it?
Uh, just a question for the chair. The, I assume that the placeholder there, we have, they're empty, right?
Yeah. Okay, Member Glass?
Yeah, so, comment on some of...
Yeah, so, coming at some of, yeah, our Johnson's plus, I wanna add, uh, I2 and I3.
Okay, member Casper?
And, oh, sorry. And 4A1. That Johnson's already, okay. That's enough.
That's it? Member Casper?
Um, 6E. And I'll comment on a couple of them.
Okay, member Grover?
I'll withhold 6F.
6F. Okay. Okay, let's go back to, let's see. 1A. Number Johnson?
Tim, a question, Jody, and, uh, I think I've asked this before, I'm gonna ask it again. This is back on page 10 of the report. That's the all funds, the segment of revenue and expenditures. Again, they tell me why the, the revised budget in the revenues column went from $9 million to $14 million on the federal aid from MBE. Just explain why that's, that significant $5 million increase happened. And also, I had a question on local sales. Again, I didn't understand what local sales is, it went from $11 million to, to $14 million. I believe that's it. So could you just, uh, explain where that came from? Explain why, why, why the change?
I'm gonna have to go back. All I can tell you, Mr. Johnson, is that each month we do put the budget revisions, the detailed budget revisions, uh, in the financial statements. But this is a cymative of, of all those changes since July 1st. So I'm gonna have to go back through the board books and kinda give you, uh, an analysis of that before I would respond to why it went from the $11 million, for example, to the $14 million. But it is in all the previous board books, but I can prepare a summary and give you that.
Instead of doing that, do you wanna just comment something? You can do it, save you the work.
Sure, it's, it's in there. I just gotta have to take a review. I can't recall every change.
Yeah, if I, if I just could do something with it, just to save you the work, 'cause I know what Sarah just wanted. I was hoping you could explain a quick.
I, I don't, but I, I'm more than happy to do a quick summary.
Sure.
Okay, member Glass, did you have something on that one too?
Yes, uh, this, this is really a question that, that goes to the financial report, but more of what maybe Carrie later can answer. Are you keeping a, a running tab of the total payments to JCI?
I don't have a summary report, um, in total, but I do have individual project, um, spreadsheets that we're keeping relating to the payments made.
So is it in a format that one could sum to a total at this point?
Yes, I believe it is.
Okay, thank you.
And we may be able to do queries within our IFS system also relative to payments made on a fairly easy basis.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to the next item. That was 1F. Member Johnson again.
Sure, that, that's a bottom thing. I know Bill always likes to ask us, likes us to ask questions on that. So I noticed that the, that the projected, uh, bottoms, uh, which we're worried about being losing student population, seems to be somewhat decreasing. And I'm hoping that so. Is that a perception? Are you actually projecting that we're not gonna have as much of a decrease next year? Again, what's your opinion?
Uh, we have seen, uh, as you remember, uh, earlier this year, we did talk about it. Yes, a much bigger difference between our projected bottoms for this year and where we were, um, where we had originally budgeted them. And I'm pleased to say that the numbers have improved. As you noted, member Johnson, the numbers have gotten a lot better. Um, it's basically a result of the, um, what we've seen is, uh, the student loss through this year has been quite a bit less this year than it has been historically. Uh, and as a result then, we're projecting, that's the, that's why we're projecting a better number. I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing our June 1st numbers and, and seeing that trend continue. And if so, then this, uh, the difference can come down a little, even a little bit more, I think, so.
That's good. I think we were close, almost it was a 300 at one time, right? Or the high 200s originally, or when we first started worrying about, something like that?
It was, uh, over 200. You're testing my memory now, but I think it was a little bit over 200.
Have you yet revised the budget? Can we? Are we at that point where maybe we won't have as much of budget deficit? Or can we say that yet? Is that wishful thinking or what do you think?
Well, I think that the data would, you know, tend to point us in that direction. But as you'll remember, we didn't fix everything that, that the shortfall created and, uh, and so we'll have to be, we'll have plenty of budget challenges ahead of us, uh, you know, and depending on what the state legislature finalizes this year, we could be looking at a, you know, a different picture for next year than what we've already put together our budget for, for, uh, relative to next year. So we might have some additional challenges with, uh, anything that gets passed here from the legislature in the next month or so.
Don't worry about it too, but at least we got a little bright spot here, so that's really good.
That's true.
Okay, nothing else on that? Let's move down to I1. Member Johnson?
Again, I just wanted to, just wanted to talk a little bit, we had, I thought, a fair discussion, uh, at the committee meeting on hiring a parliamentarian. Or not hiring one, but I brought it up as an item. And, uh, in fact, you know, I invited, with approval of the superintendent here, invited a local person to address the board. And, uh, and, but I was disappointed that the group didn't jump on the opportunity. The local person actually is an experienced parliamentarian, lives in Duluth, and he even volunteered to the office services for free for the board, as well as giving just general presentations, as well as actually helping out, uh, the, the board run smoother. And I think we're not over that hump yet. I hope we are, but it's always good to have a better meeting procedure, I thought. So I was a little bit disappointed that we decided to put it off for now. Uh, again, there was a couple of statements that I did wanna clarify for the board. One member of the board said that, again, we don't follow Roberts Rules of Order. We've had this discussion 100 times. Well, say it again. Our bylaws 90, 95 states, and I quote, "Any question of order shall be decided according to parliamentary rules for government of deliberate bodies defined by Roberts Rules of Order." Verbatim quote out of our bylaws. And 80, 95 again states, "When questions of order arise, procedures shall be in accordance with Roberts Rules of Order." And again, uh, I wanna thank the board for at least listening to our presentations. But I still think that in the future, I hope we, we could particularly, um, use somebody who has volunteered his time for free, I think would be an opportunity that I hope the board re-does reconsider in the future.
Okay, um, I2. Member Glass?
Yes, I took the time to write a detailed resolution dealing with, uh, providing safe transportation choices. And I'd like to make a motion dealing with I2 that reads, "The school district authorizes the use of alternate safe transportation choices for students to be financed to enable all students to participate equally in planned, school, and quality learning activities of their choice by using public transportation and/or parent-provided transportation." It's a, a simple motion that as a, as a rule, we wanna do our best to get our students to, to our schools, so that's why I'm making this motion.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and I don't know if I, it, it's what's written right here? Is it here or you?
No, it's written right here.
Okay, I don't have a copy of it. So it's been, um, motion made by member Glass, seconded by member, uh, Johnson. Do you have any? Member?
I have a, can you explain that? How it's going to be paid for? If there's a cost with it? Have we analyzed that cost? I thought at our committee meeting, we talked that we were going, uh, the administration was going to, uh, make contact with some of the providers, uh, that have provided that, um, opportunity for kids who wanted to go, uh, go and, and stay later at school, uh, to participate in some of these. I thought we were gonna look into that and we were gonna receive information regarding that. So that, this to me seems like we're sort of jumping the gun a bit with that, um, in anticipation. It sounds like you're anticipating that we aren't doing that or that isn't being provided? Is that right? And, um, if you are, do you have, uh, information about that, that we aren't providing that or that, uh, organizations aren't providing that now?
Thank you, member Casper. Um, oh, member Johnson?
If I could suggest to the, the chair, you know, again, I appreciate this motion. I think we had a good discussion on this as well at the committee. But I think we're a little bit premature to move on this. So I would suggest that we defer this back to the business committee for further discussion. Uh, that's what I would, uh, suggest and that's actually an amendment to the, to the motion if you wanna, wanna do that.
Well, and, and actually, member Johnson, I think it says they're gonna come back, uh, 'cause the, the information isn't ready. Correct, Bill? Was that?
That's correct.
We're not, we have to get back. So I think that we're, um, waiting maybe till next month, they're gonna get some more information on it. That's, it was just there, kinda to wait? Is that correct?
Well, we do have a motion on the floor though, so we do have to dispense of it. And my suggestion is here, we defer that to the committee, which is basically the same thing. And then we follow our, uh, our rules here. I don't, you know, again, I don't know if Gary agrees with that, but I, I would suggest that.
Do you need a second to defer?
Uh, it would have to be a second to, yes.
So I, I can accept that as a, as a friendly motion. We defer it to the, to the appropriate committee and we just move ahead with this, so.
So we defer it back to?
I'm sorry. Make it, uh, deferral to the committee for their further action with, with the idea that we're gonna wanna do this. We wanna get our students to the classes that we offer.
Okay, well, let's, you know what? So what we need to do, I have to just make sure. We need to vote, first of all, on member Glass's original motion. No, no. On the amendment to the motion, I'm sorry. That's right.
Okay, thank you. Bill relates on that.
Oh, okay. Member Casper, you wanted to say something?
I'm sorry for speaking without being recognized. Uh, so we're, in essence, deferring back to what it says. Okay, that's what I wanted to make. Because right now it says that we'll, we'll come back to the board with a report on monies used for transportation options. So in essence, we're saying we want to continue with what it says here.
Okay, superintendent, I think you, I think we wanna clarify this.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
I heard Mr. Glass say something entirely different just now. First of all, right now, I don't understand why, the, the idea was right, that we would do some work on this and bring it back. So why would you go through this when you could've just disposed of the motion by defeating it? The amendment that was offered, what I just heard, is a different amendment. And that was refer it back with an understanding we were going to do this. Uh, and this has big budget implications. And so I, I think that's a different emphasis that says we're going to do this and refer it back to a committee. I, I, in my judgment, we need to get the information together first and you can put a motion together of what you wanna do about that. But that last statement, Mr. Glass, I just heard was a different, was a different than what I heard Mr. Johnson say as the motion. Your motion was simply to refer it back to the committee. So I, I just think there was some language there that's different.
Thank you, superintendent. Member Johnson?
Madam Chair, just, if, if I could add, suggest a clarification on the way to go here. Say a scenario would happen if, if we defer back to the committee and the committee doesn't have to prove it, that we can say, ah geez, we think this idea stinks and hey, we got a better idea. That's what committees do. And what it does, what it does, I think, you know, again, I'm trying to compliment Gary for having ideas and I, if there is a motion on the floor, I hate to just, uh, say, vote it down. I mean, uh, certainly this board could, but I think that we are gonna talk about this in the future. And I think that we heard the administration say they're gonna try to present some numbers. So I think to, I would, to me it'd be easy just to go, if we did defer it, that we don't vote on the motion, the motion just gets deferred and that's the end of the, the motion. For now, we don't have to, have to vote on Gary's motion, we just defer it and then the committee takes it over whenever they do want it, it couldn't be nothing.
Okay, don't we need to vote on the amendment first?
Yeah, well, we would vote to defer and then that's actually the end of the action for tonight.
I have to comment?
Member Glass, go ahead.
Uh, there are two specific, uh, transportation problems. I'd like the committee that's going to deal with this to deal with, and that is the, the letter we got from Commissioner dealing with the Lincoln Park students. Uh, there's a very specific letter identifying a problem of those students and their tardiness and, and what to be done with them come fall at the new school. I, I think the, your group needs to deal with how that's gonna happen and that's a transportation question that we need to deal with. The basic one though is one that deals with the kids in the Central Hillside, that those kids wanna, wanna get to the zero hour classes or they wanna participate in the after-school activities. And we wanna figure out a way to facilitate their participation. That's, that's what's driving this whole idea. So that's the idea behind it, nothing more, nothing less, and that's the essence of it. And I do support setting this over as a, what do you call it? A postponement?
A deferral.
A deferral to the committee.
Okay, first of all, we're gonna vote on the amendment that member Glass brought forward. No, member Johnson did, sorry. And seconded by member Glass. Okay, we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? No. So that fails 2-5. Members Glass and Johnson voting for it. Now we have to vote on the motion that member Glass made to move forward on, on?
No, the exact motion, it's in his, right.
On this. Go ahead, member Grover. Yeah, can you say it again? That's a good idea. Member Glass, would you say that again, please? Or it's not what's written right here?
No, it's, it's the, uh, the resolve that the school board authorizes the use of alternate safe transportation choices for students to be financed to enable all students to participate equally in planned, school, and quality learning activities of their choice by using public transportation and/or parent-provided transportation. Or anything else that the board comes up with.
Okay, thank you. Okay, member Johnson?
Just, uh, this, again, a discussion on it here. If I understand the motion correctly, it only authorizes this, it doesn't mandate us to do anything. It just says if the school wants to do it, it does. Uh, that's how I, I read that and it seems to me a fairly, uh, uh, good idea.
Um, member Casper?
I'm not gonna support it in its current writing. Not that I don't support the idea that we should be looking into this, but I would like a thorough res, bit of research done on it and giving us some detail of what that cost will be. Right now, it seems open-ended that we will provide this. And to me, saying that means we've committed to that without having an understanding of what it costs. So I would like to see it come back to the, in a committee forum for the administration to research it, to provide us with some numbers of what those cost, to provide us with those providers that might help us with some of those costs prior to committing it, to it. So I'm not gonna support it as it is, but I do support the concept of looking at alternate opportunities for kids to get to and from school, so.
Thank you. Member Cameron?
I'm gonna agree with member Casper. We did have a really lengthy conversation regarding this at the business committee meeting. And, um, member Glass, although it sounds really nice, what you read, there's so many implications, budget implications, and there's been no study. I have no idea how many children in Central Hillside, uh, who want to participate in after-school programs are not. I know that the integration specialists are already picking kids up that missed the bus or have any other things that might be going on in their home. So it sounds to me like a study needs to be done and we've already recommended that this go back to administration to have them look into some of those issues that you brought up. Because there's a lot of unanswered things here and there's a huge budget implication. Because there's a lot of unanswered things here and there's a huge budget implication here as well.
Thank you, Member Cameron. We're going to go ahead and vote on Member Glass's motion.
Madam Chair?
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, just a clarification. Did I, I thought I understood at the committee hearing that we already do provide some tickets for some students, isn't, isn't that what Bill said that, there? So really haven't we all, somebody must have already authorized this correctly. I mean, which, which is, seems like, I mean, it seems like it's working there. Again, just want to make that comment here that we apparently already are, uh, using DTA, uh, to a certain extent and somewhat successfully, apparently.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to vote on this motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. See, that fails two, five, with Members Glass and Johnson voting against it.
Voting in favor.
Or voting in favor, I'm sorry. Um, okay. We're going to move on to I three. Member Glass?
Uh, yes. I three, we have a, a resolution previously submitted to the agenda-setting group dealing with this particular issue. And I'll just read that as a motion. Uh, make a motion that the security measures be implemented as soon as possible for all school buildings and schedule be revised to assure the sites with the highest risk factors be given the highest priority for installation, necessary equipment, and implementation of approved security procedures for the assistance of safe, actual safe and welcoming environments be established in all Duluth Public Schools. So those schools that have the highest risk factors be given the highest priority. And ideally, they all be done at once and as fast as possible. That's the motion.
Uh, that's a second. I have to summarize that, but I did second.
Okay. So we have a motion from Member Glass, a second from Member Johnson. Is there any discussion? Member Casper?
Mr. Leiter, um, with regards to installing a security system in this building, um, is there a cost detriment or a cost benefit to staying with the existing plan that calls for it happening in about two years? Or moving ahead with, uh, the installation of the security system in this building as detailed in the plan?
Member Casper, members of the board, um, fortunately or unfortunately, I, I took vacation last week, so I wasn't here for the discussion at the Business Committee meeting where David Spooner was, uh, representing our department. Um, I, I'm not sure if, uh, because I haven't had a chance to follow up with him since on what research he did. I, I would just respond in general that my question asked of him and there, and through him to Johnson Controls and the consultances, how would moving this ahead now, um, affect the cost, given the other work that's, that's planned in this building? And I would say in general, I would expect that if we have a lot of other work in this building that is going to impact the ceilings or cabling or wiring, that it would be more cost-effective to do it at once rather than in pieces.
So along that line, could we defer this for a month to allow you to put together a report on that, that if truly we moved that up two years and the impact was significant additional cost to do that because of the things you mentioned, could you detail that for us in a plan for our next month's meeting that would, um, because I, I mean, a month isn't going to, well, hopefully it's not going to make any difference as far as security in the building, um, as far as getting some of that information so we have a better understanding because if we voted to move ahead with installing a security system now and found out that there was significant cost implications to that, that wouldn't be prudent use of the taxpayers' money. So I would like to, before I vote on this in support or, uh, in opposition to it, have a better understanding of what the implications are of it, so.
And I, I will try to accomplish that before the next Business Committee meeting so I can communicate that to the board. If, if we could proceed with this work and it doesn't have significant additional cost, um, then I, I would agree that that's something that makes sense to do. However, if it does have additional cost, I would want the school board to be aware of that and make a decision on that basis. And we still may go ahead with it if that's what the board decides.
Member Johnson?
I guess the same thing maybe, Madam Chair, as I would, uh, move that we defer this to the Business Committee. Again, just as Member Casper said, again, that would be a way to, uh, uh, get rid of the motion and, or settle the motion, whatever we want to say.
I think the effect would be the same if we just simply voted no. Because that would leave the existing information as it, which is, which is.
That's correct.
What's being suggested, I guess.
Okay. Let's vote on that motion. Member Johnson?
I guess I'm worried about voting no. If we vote no on, is that, is the board could be perceived as we don't want to proceed with this. And so, uh, that's, if we have a motion on the floor and we're voting against that motion, where the motion is basically to, to, uh, install the security systems in historical Central, and if we vote that down, uh, again, the board can change its mind, but I think would be, I think would be, leave us more flexibility to defer to the committee and dispose of the motion that way rather than voting no.
Um, I, I think what Member Grover stated, uh, makes a lot of sense. We're just, it's just a first back what is in here with getting more information next month. So let's vote on Member Glass's motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. That fails two, five. Um, okay. So.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for the record, there was, minutes probably need to reflect that Member Johnson made a motion. That was not seconded. Would that have been a motion, Member Johnson?
It was a motion.
That was, that was not seconded.
Oh, okay.
So we reacted properly, but the next need to reflect that motion was made and not seconded.
Thank you, Member Grover. Okay. We're going to move on to the next item that was pulled, I think was three, B one. Member Johnson, is that right?
Sure, that's my, I just wanted to make a comment on that and I had brought up an issue here that, uh, that the school email system, I was concerned about it being used for basically internal, uh, school board, the political issues. I thought that was inappropriate. I have talked to a couple people about this and, including Superintendent, he doesn't necessarily agree with me, but again, that's why I brought this up, was that I was concerned, it was pointed out that we already have a bylaw there and, you know, I'm comfortable with that. But I do expect that the email system, uh, not be used for those type of purposes in the future and I'm hoping that won't happen again.
Okay. We'll move on to four, A one, and that's you again, Member Johnson.
Okay. Yeah, I just had a question on this, was more of an implication of, of this. Again, I support this renewal. It sounds like we got a price reduction. That's good. Uh, but again, uh, uh, one of the concerns, a lot of the discussion that I've had is confusing on this. And I believe that, um, the HRA is separate from this, is correct? We're renewing this and HRA is fully separate through the employees' contracts and has really nothing to do with renewing this insurance. Is that correct?
That's correct. The HRA is a separate item.
Thank you.
Member Glass?
Yes, I had also a question on this. The application that you give us as the only piece of information relevant to the contract shows that there are three options available, the Advantage High Plan, the Advantage Value Plan, and the Advantage HSA Plan. Can you tell me what the differences in costs would be to this district if we picked one of the other options that you're presently showing? And what, what are the variables associated with doing that?
I don't have that information, uh, with me. I could put it together. I would remind board members that this is a collectively bargained benefit and, uh, so you don't have the, you know, freedom without going through the collective bargaining process to, to make that change. Um, but if you're interested in having new cost out, the difference, I can, um, do an estimate for you on that.
So these would be cost items that you had received from PEIP and made a decision on? You, you got, originally you got cost items from the group that offers this?
I, I don't have current cost items on the other plans that you're referencing, no.
What about the cost items for the ones that were originally purchased for last year? Do you have, do you have the cost breakout for those?
I have the cost of the plan that we utilized for last year, if that's what you just asked me.
Yes. And I asked you, did you have the options to see what the alternate choices would give you?
And again, I don't have that, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head and whether I have them in my file, I'm going to have to go back and look. But if I don't have them, I can get them.
Okay. Good. On the sheet that you do, send us by email, the sheet. Uh, it shows that there are three different, four different cost levels associated with, with these. This infers that, that the employee has a choice? Is, is the, is the employee given a choice or is the choice already made or is it a cooperative?
Um, thing. As part of the, uh, as part of the program, the employee chooses a primary care clinic. Um, different providers in our area are, um, evaluated, uh, by the state and, uh, put into different cost levels. And as a general statement, our providers, uh, in this area are in cost levels two and three.
Okay.
And the, again, the employee chooses, uh, with the knowledge of which cost level the various clinics are in, the employee makes the choice as to which cost level or which clinic they want to declare as their primary care clinic, knowing then that their benefits will, um, be impacted by that choice.
Okay. And, and the cost levels two and three seem to have nothing to do with the, with the three choices that are shown in your application. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's okay. But I'll, I guess I wa, I could see that. If I see a price breakdown, then I will be able to figure it out. Okay. Thank you.
Superintendent?
Maybe what we ought to do next month on the Business Committee is ask the leadership from the, our insurance committee that works diligently on this, come and do a, um, update because it's clear words like negotiated state statutes that say you can't reduce the benefit, all those pieces isn't clearly understood. So maybe let's put this on as an item of information and help maybe understand sort of this insurance piece as a whole.
Thank you, Superintendent. Okay. Let's move on to four, A two. Member Johnson?
Didn't we talk about that already?
Yeah.
Yeah, how did I get that out of order? Didn't you even put me out of order or something?
Yeah, you talked about, brought up, I don't know, legal.
Okay. We're going to move on to six, E then. Member Casper?
Getting long already. Mr. Leiter, um, I'd like to point out and recognize that it looks like the latest report from the long-range, uh, plan from Johnson Controls, we saw a significant step up in the amount of local contractors. We went in the past from the upper 20% to almost 40% now in local contractors. So I want to recognize the fact that we are doing more with local contractors as this, as this project continues to move along. Um, so, and then hopefully that's what that represents, so. And then secondly, um, you and I have spoke a couple of times. Near and dear to my heart is the greenhouse as part of the East, New East High School. And we spoke today and you were going to look into, uh, where we were at with the rebid of that high school as part of that plan. And also, we spoke, uh, when Members Saliga, Panko and, and I toured the school a few weeks ago about the potential that the construction management, I believe, part of the school won't be ready for this fall. Um, both of those have significant impact on, uh, our STC opportunity and offerings at our new Eastern High School. And I just am looking for an update on where we're at with both of those issues, so. And I know you just came back from vacation.
Member Casper, members of the board, since our conversation, I did have an opportunity today to follow up on this subject in, in two regards. Um, a meeting with Johnson Controls and the project management staff, we talked about the status of the bidding of, um, a number of, uh, parts of remaining work. And, uh, at this point, they, they are not ready to go out to bid. Um, one bid package is out right now and that's for the turn signal on Superior Street and 40th. Um, they are working on the final, uh, preparations of the bid package to go out for the parking lot and the, and the greenhouse. I have also made arrangements to meet with, or tentative arrangements to meet with, with Jim Art and, uh, the program instructor, um, Jenny McGoll, on Thursday to review the plans, to see if she has any additional, um, comments regarding the changes that we made to the plans to allow us to at least receive two bidders for that particular work for the greenhouse. And that was the reason that we, we held off on making awards, that we only had one bidder for that and had expressed interest from another contractor that with some modifications to design, they would be able to bid and be very competitive.
Member Grover? Um, it seems like it's been several months now that, on the report, and I don't have it in front of me, but I, in reading it, uh, over the weekend or last week, I re, I think I recall seeing, regarding grant, that construction documents are being prepared. Are we, are we getting close to, you know, getting, uh, documents out for bid on this project? Because I, I think we want to get shovels in the ground pretty, pretty soon, don't we? For a fall of next year opening?
Well, our, our process for developing the, uh, construction documents includes a 85% and a 95% review, um, of the documents. At this point, we have done the 95% review. Um, the architect and the engineers are finishing up those drawings. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we will be, um, prepared soon to, to put that out to bid. I can't tell you tonight exactly when that date would be, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Johnson? Uh, or Member Grover, E then?
Uh, just one, just one comment. Oh, yeah. It does say bid documents are being prepared for competitive bidding. But I feel like I've seen that last several months, so.
It takes several months.
I'm, I'm learning that. But goodness, it's all gone on a lot of things.
Member Johnson?
Uh, Madam Chair, different topic here. I kind of finally realized that, how do I talk about the Spontaneitarian thing and you're supposed to call me out of order? I'm supposed to bend on, but what I did, we did kind of miss and I missed here, my fault was, uh, I one, which was attorney use. And I had just missed a couple things on that. Uh, could I do that? Since I spoke out of order before, I'm not sure what happened, but could I go back to that? I one? Yeah. Again, that's why I brought this up too. I didn't, uh, we have had some discussion on it. I think the administration is going to continue looking at that. But, uh, again, do we need to have an attorney present at the board meetings? Uh, so I guess wanted to mention here that we did have that discussion. I'm looking forward to, uh, to, uh, uh, further discussion here next month on that issue. Uh, Madam Chair, one other thing, I, I, could I pull item one H, which is investment in school children? I realize that I forgot to mention that to you. Would, do you mind if I do that?
I think that there was something with that where they, it wasn't done? Forgot what it was? Or what, what was that?
Well, this is just the grants one, is all. I was just going to make a comment on that, is that's, is that's all right? Yeah. This is on page 38 and, you know, I was looking at this, um, I was really quite impressed with the grants and what all the actual, uh, what people have given to the school, the donations. They're really quite impressive. Like, there's $3,500 grants that people have contributed to our school, uh, and there's many, many up into the $100, $300, $500 price range. I just wanted to again, recognize members of our community, uh, members of our business community, most of these are actually members of the individuals that have really contributed enormous amount of, of money for music programs, robotic programs, a lot of really great contributions. I just wanted to recognize that. Uh, the amount of like $7,500 here, this, just this last month, and that's really pretty neat.
Thank you, Member Johnson. Okay, we're going to go ahead and vote on the remainder.
I just have...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just have one thing under other if I could after we're all done.
Wait a second. We've got, Member Grover, I'm sorry, um, six F.
This is on, uh, informational change orders relating to the facilities plan. Um, Carrie, this is the kind of thing that makes me real nervous about what might be coming next month, because I couldn't help but notice all schools were represented, all, all, all current projects were represented in the change orders, including grant, actually, uh, which hasn't even been bid out yet, uh, for the main construction anyway, but there was nothing at all from Lincoln Park Middle School. Is, are things, uh, moving that according, that much according to plan, or is there such a pile of them that we're going to see next month? Or, it just seems really strange, since there's, there's something from every project virtually every month and nothing from Lincoln Park this month.
Um, Member Grover, members of the board, first of all, we, we do, we did award some bids related to grant, and that was to, um, enclose Grace Creek in the pipe, and I believe that's what that change order may have been related to, but, um, as far as Lincoln Park Middle School, I think, uh, project is coming out of the ground pretty well. Um, there, the change orders probably are more minimal at, at this point in time of the project, and even, even if they're, so I, I think it's just coincidence that this month there aren't any here. I'm, I'm not aware of anything that come in. In fact, today, we had a conversation with the project manager for that project, and there were no change orders that were even discussed in our meeting this week, so.
And while it...
Well, that's good.
Yeah, it is good, but it does make me nervous, because, I don't know, it seems like they even out in the long months, so maybe next month they'll be in the long-hauling. Next month, I'd hate to see twice as many as normal. I, I just want to comment on that project. I periodically stop on Skyline, uh, there's a, there's a large, uh, outlook there above Wheeler Field and the Ordox and everything, and it's really exciting to see that project coming together down there. It's going to be one gorgeous middle school when, when it's completed. I mean, it's, it's just a beehive of activity down there, and it's just exciting to see it coming together.
If we have a summer season that's on the, the dry side of the scale versus the wet side of the scale, it'll be really to our advantage. It'll help us to en- improve, uh, our schedule quite a bit.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Leiter. Okay, we're ready to vote on the entire rest of the business committee. Um, everyone, um, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? So that passed five two, or six one? Six one, with Member Glass voting against it. Okay, back to the agenda. I know it was right here. Um, we have no special resolutions. If there's any questions or other, and I'm just wondering if students of Lindsay or Marcus, you know, one of you, you know, wanted to add any comments or anything? You don't have to, don't feel pressured, but, you know, you've been great staying here to the, the very end, and I'm wondering if you wanted to say anything? Okay, thanks so much for being here. And Member Casper, you'd like to say something?
Yes, I have one thing under other. Um, I want to recognize, um, Members Wasson, uh, Member Saliga Panko, and Member Grover for, uh, they're recognizing that, uh, during our process of choosing a new superintendent, that, um, um, they recognized in, during that process that as, as we moved through that, that they, uh, weren't going to be able to gain the votes, that they, um, were hoping to, uh, but when it came time to vote to support the majority of the board's, uh, desire for a superintendent, um, they voted unanimously to do that, and that's, um, something that we should all take to heart, that, and if you recall, each of our six superintendent candidates that came before us spoke that language, that after the vote is taken, it's time to move on and to do the good of the board. And I want to recognize each of you three for recognizing that. When it came time to do that, you did that. It presented us well. Uh, Mr. Schrau, who came before us, recognized that as well. So members of our community are recognizing, uh, that we came together in unison to support that new superintendent, uh, that effort to bring somebody here, so I want to acknowledge each of you for doing that and thanking you for, for, for putting, uh, personal or whatever it happens to be to the side and doing for, what's best for the board and what's best for our community. And I also want to thank, um, Mr. Grantzett for, uh, for his efforts and his continued efforts for our district and our kids, so, thank you.
Thank you, Member Casper. Mark?
Um, yes, I just wanted to kind of add to that. Um, a lot of students got involved, including myself, um, for interviewing, you know, the final three candidates, and, um, it was really a good experience for us. Uh, we got to know, you know, especially, uh, Dr. Foster, and, um, just, we're really supportive, and we're looking forward to, um, the new superintendent. We're happy to be, uh, a part of the process, so, thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. We appreciate that. Okay, with that, no one else? I'd say we are adjourned.